Okay.
I'm sure you got a minute.
They have water in the cooler back there.
I know. Stop it.
And Kennard is coming too, isn't he?
Thank you.
You can hand him my bag. Just put them in our place.
Excellent.
He's got a seat down there at the end.
We have Angela. We don't know the Tracy.
Angela just went to the bathroom. She said we were in the bathroom.
There's Tracy. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the 2024 Citrus County Collaborative Budget Discussion. Just as a reminder, for those that are here from the public, there will be no open to the public during this meeting. Comments are welcome at the next scheduled BOCC meeting on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. We'll start with the pledge and hope that our county administrator has finished his walk inside by the time we finish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Mayor Sells still in the room? Okay, I was told he was walking in, so I could get going. How about we, Kat, can we go ahead and play the video and then let Steve make remarks after? If y'all haven't heard, that is a citrus county eagle. It's important! Does he pay taxes?
This is a big deal for Citrus County. We've gone from a culture of "that ain't gonna happen" to "it's happening."
Today is a great day for Citrus County and the Citrus County Animal Shelter.
Thank you, Kat. It is where nature and community thrive. And with that, I'd like to invite Steve Howard to come up and make some remarks.
I was at a little birthday party this weekend, and I think I came down with something, so I don't, I'm gonna try to stay away from y'all, but I had to stop with some cough drops. But thank you for being here today. I will tell you, the challenges that this county faces are not unique to this government. As I talked to a lot of my colleagues across this state and across the nation, there's a lot of challenges. But we are stronger together. I always say that working together, we can, there's nothing that we can't accomplish. I often use a word, impossible. If you put a space in it, it says impossible. So I think there's nothing that if we come together that we can't accomplish as a team. So I'm excited about where this county is going. Actually, tomorrow's a big day for me. I'm gonna become an official taxpayer of this county with a property acquisition. So I'll be paying some big taxes, and I'm gonna be saying, "Lower the taxes, lower the taxes." But, just kidding, just kidding. But it is a great, you know, a great day to be in Citrus. We're facing, again, growth and all these other things, but that's all over the United States. But if we come together, there's nothing that we can't accomplish, and we must do that for our citizens, give our best effort forward. So as you watched the video, last year was really branding, the year of Make It Happen. And there's so much that really was accomplished, again, as a team and all the employees out here in the audience. Without them, we can't make this happen. They keep it running, and all of you, you as well. So again, we all serve the same citizens at the end of the day. So thank you for, I love seeing this, all these folks coming together. I will tell you, the folks who are in this room, I think our strength has never been stronger, our bonds. I work real well with the judges and, and the clerk's office and Mo and Supervisor of Elections and, and everybody else. So we're here to work together as a team, because together, everybody achieves more. So thank you for being here. I'm gonna try not to get too close to you. I don't think I'm, I don't have fever or anything, but that's what happens when you get to a little kids' party, everybody's coughing and everything like that. So, but you're gonna have a great session. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. This is, this board is, very much stands for us planning ahead, more so, I believe, than we have in the past as a county. So this collaborative session is for us to really think long-term about what all of our various needs are year over year. Those adjustments cannot be made overnight, obviously, but the more we plan ahead, the more efficient we can be with all of our budgets. And I really feel very positive about that. We had a wonderful presentation by Metro Forecasting that is going to give us, assuming that we approve that contract or a similar vendor, that is going to give us an extraordinary detail of actionable data on exactly what to expect in the growth patterns coming to Citrus County and how best to shape them to keep it as where nature and community thrives. Now, I'd like everyone to go around and introduce themselves. Start on this end.
Jeff Fuller, Chalkwood Administrator, the Judicial Circuit.
I'm Rick Howard, Circuit Judge.
I'm Carol Falvey. I'm the Administrative Judge of Circuit County and also a Circuit Court Judge.
Ed Spates, Citrus County Judge.
Ruthie Davis, Slayball, District Three, County Commission.
Rebecca Bayes, County Commissioner, District Four.
Holly Davis, County Commissioner, District Five.
Diana Finnegan, County Commissioner, District Two.
Angela Veek, Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller.
Tracy Phillips, Chief of Staff for Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller.
Maureen Moberg, Supervisor of Elections.
Leanna Leva, Administrative Services Director with the Supervisor of Elections Office.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Veronica, is Veronica here? Do we know where Commissioner Kennard is? By any chance, he is coming, I hope. He's coming. Oh, excellent. It was an early call this morning, more than normal. Okay, Ms. Doran, Erin Doran, our Budget Director, Management Budget Director.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners and elected officials. I'm starting to sound better. I'm getting better, but I know I still, it's a little funny, so hopefully, my voice will last through this presentation. Okay, so this presentation, we're gonna go over real quickly at the beginning, basically where we are now, and then some considerations for the future and some information that we have about our constitutional offices. So this is our taxable value history. We've shown this before, but basically, if you look at it, unfortunately, it's not much bigger. In 2008, we had over $12 billion in taxable value. We just surpassed that this year, 2024. I believe we're at like 13.9. So that's kind of a representation of what happened after the housing crash. This we received from the Property Praiser's Office. They were nice enough to send this to us. It is for 2023, but this is where our taxable value is, basically where the funding is coming from. You can see the majority of that is residential. There's due commercial vacant residential, which is residential property that does not have a structure on it, tangible and then miscellaneous, which is like ag property. This was the dollar for the general fund for fiscal year '24. So on here are the expenses of the general fund. In the green is a portion that goes to our constitutional officers. And so for fiscal year '24, for ad valorem, with our millage of 6.9951, it generated slightly over $95 million. 59.5% of that funding went to our constitutional officers, which just shows like how important our relationship is with everyone. And we really do appreciate everyone's staff and everyone working with us with their budgets. These are some potential budget impacts we spoke about back in March. We had a lot more, but a lot of the potential bills did not pass. So the first one is the CPI-adjusted homestead exemption. This will be on the November ballot. We just kind of have a note there, 67% of our homesteaded properties, residential properties are homesteaded. So that, that's quite a high value. Unauthorized camping, that passed. That needs to be in effect by October 1st of 2024. What that means as far as what the county will have to do, I still don't have a total understanding of that, so I can't tell you about how much that will cost, but it is something, obviously, that we're going to have to comply with. And then space needs. At this point, as the Chair mentioned, you know, we are looking at some forecasting. We're also looking at a space needs analysis. So we're currently in that phase of getting that authorization approved. And we have some staff members here this morning that are gonna go over that with us.
Erin, could you talk more about the CPI-adjusted homestead exemption, what the effect will be?
We don't know what the effect will be. We were able to calculate it when it was just gonna be a flat additional $25,000 exemption, but the CPI changes every year, so I can't tell you what that will be if it passes.
Is it 100% would go down, have lower taxable value then? Or is it would go up or down over the line?
I honestly don't know. I would imagine they would only do it for it to go down, but that's something we would have to ask legal to read the bill.
That's what I would assume, but yes.
Yeah, and let us know. This talks about Save Our Homes. We discuss this almost every year, but sometimes it's hard to understand, so we kind of put a representation up here. So if you have a homesteaded property, it goes up every year by the CPI with a max of 3%. So that first house is a homesteaded property. The second house is a non-homesteaded property. If they both came on the same year and they were, you know, assessed $200,000, they would pay $1,400 is what would come to the county through ad valorem. That second year, that homesteaded property, if they had the max, could go up to $206,000. The non-homesteaded property can go up 10% or to $220,000. And so that difference that second year is that homesteaded property would pay $42. The non-homesteaded property would pay $140. So when we talk about 67% of our homes being homesteaded, you can see there's, you know, there's a lot of money that's being saved through that homestead or Save Our Homes bill. And what I will tell you is, I went out and looked at floridaTatchWatch.org, and they actually ranked the counties and looked at, because of Save Our Homes, how much per capita taxes were being pushed onto other taxpayers from this being in place. And for Citrus County, we ranked 24th, or $386.51 per capita. So it was less than the state average, which was about $504, but still, we were the 24th highest that gets that tax shift. So that's just one thing to consider when we're obviously looking at our ad valorem and our millage rate. New construction revenue, this is both residential and commercial. And so that is the new construction that comes on every year, whether it's houses or commercial property. This shows from 2017 through 2024. You can see, it's spiked, it's gone up, it's gone down. But basically, when we look at this, the percentage up above that each line is a percent of our ad valorem revenue that actually came from that new construction. So even in 2024, with that number being, you know, high for us, that was only 2.8% of the ad valorem dollars that we took in.
Commissioner Slayball?
Good morning, Erin.
Good morning.
So when, just for the public, when people say growth should be paying for itself, 2.8 million will not pay for what growth is hap, is happening here in Citrus County.
Well, I think a lot of people, when they hear growth, and especially when they see it, they think it's a lot of money. And I have another slide where it's like $54, $55 million in new construction for commercial only brings on $370,000 in new tax revenue. So you see $54, $55 million in new construction, and you say, "That's, that's a lot of money." But then when you look at how much it's producing in ad valorem funding, it, it's not as much as, you know, one would think when you were looking at it. Now, there are other benefits, obviously, especially with commercial, like Commissioner Bayes was talking about, where now with commercial, people would come in and do shopping. We would get maybe more gas tax, more sales tax, things like that. But just as far as ad valorem goes, it, you know, as far as our budget goes, that's 2%, 2.8% of our budget. So if you just think about what we as a board incur every year for increases, what our constitutional officers incur every year in increases, especially now with inflation, what our constitutional officers incur every year in increases, especially now with inflation, we know inflation is more than that. This talks about the millage rate, and this is just kind of a quick overview, maybe for those in the audience. When we talk about our rollback, if we do rollback millage, all we're getting is that new construction money. When we leave the millage rate as it is, you're gonna get that new construction plus the taxable value increase. So that's what the property appraiser goes out and assesses. And, you know, we get a total saying, okay, now it's... Last year it was almost 12% increase in taxable value. And then obviously, increased millage rate, you're gonna get new construction, the taxable value increase, and then obviously, whatever that new millage is that is levied. This is a future development map, and our GIS department put this together. This just kind of shows some of the developments that are possible. You know, we have our Growth Management Director here. You know, if you all want to discuss any of those potential projects. But as of right now, and speaking with him, he's saying that our residential permits are staying about 2,000 homes per year. And so this is that slide I was speaking about earlier. If you look at the 2,000 homes on average that we're staying with every year for permits, last year, the average assessed value, what they were taxed on, was about $170,000. That'd be $2.3 million in that new construction revenue. $53 million of new commercial development coming on would be about $370,000 in new construction revenue. And so that $53 million came from looking right up there at the corner in La Canto, that Target, the Skechers, the Hobby Lobby, those stores that we knew were coming, that we have permits for. Obviously, there are many, many stores and other property up there that we don't have information on yet. So that is certainly not the total for that area. That's just what we know about. And then this slide is probably the most important. This is kind of what we know is on the horizon, things we've been discussing, and kind of need to look at for budgeting. So we know Ozelo has some infrastructure issues. There are two projects that are currently in the LMS. They total about $40 million. Even if we were to go through with HMGP or some other type of FEMA grant to get that covered, that has about a 25% cost match. So you're looking at $10 million. So even if we were to get that grant and we came to, there would be no way for us to immediately have available to us $10 million, you know, to match that grant. But what's great news is that there are grants out there that can help us cover part of that. The next one is County Road 491. That's from 486 to 200. This is a widening, and so the estimate we'd been given is like $160 million. Again, there are some grants out there for that. One was 50%, so we would need to come up with about $80 million. Recently, we found another grant that may help us, that may cover more, maybe up to 75%. But in order to go after those grants and those bigger grants, obviously, you need that match. And that's gonna be an even bigger match. Our bonding capacity at this point is about $50 million. And transportation impact fees can cover the portion of the widening that is attributable to the widening, so that extra lane or lanes, but it cannot cover the whole thing. Currently, there's about $3 million there, and obviously, that will build up over time. And again, Mr. Landon brought up that the transportation, well, not just transportation, but the impact fee study is going to come up here recently to look at all of our impact fees again. Future road resurfacing. Right now, we fund road resurfacing, residential road resurfacing. We match for Scott projects, which is those connector roads. Going forward, I know we're looking at alternative ways to fund residential road resurfacing, but we still have those connector roads and those bridges that will need to be covered. They are going to need to be maintenance and kept up. And so going forward, there is a... Another planning tool that's out there, that is actually out on the street right now, for us to do an assessment of our roadways. And hopefully, when we get that back, we'll have a better understanding of what needs to be done, where it needs to be done, when it needs to be done, and possibly how much that will really cost. And, you know, maybe a better estimate than just $20 million per year once we lose Scott. The last one is the space needs. So right now, we're doing that analysis, but this just kind of says future expansion. And again, that's not just the county, that's our constitutionals. Those are the individuals and the offices that we're required to provide space for. What is the best space? What do they need? Where does it need to be? We don't know how much that's gonna cost. Again, hopefully, when that space needs study is done, again, we'll have a better understanding of what we truly do need, what we truly do have, and what we can do with that, as well as, you know, maybe what it'll cost to address some of those needs. I just wanted to let you know, right now, our millage rate is at 8.9302. 6.9951 of that is general fund millage. Even if the board had levied all 10 mills that we were allowed, and we use that additional 1.0698 mills just for the general fund, per se, to do projects or something, that would have only provided us an additional $13.8 million, which is a lot of money, obviously. But if you're looking at, that's our max, so that would be, that, again, everything. All of the board, any of our projects, any of our constitutionals, anything that we would need. So I think it's great that the board is looking at some of those metro forecasting and some other tools that we'll be able to look at, the five-year financial forecast, to help us look at what's coming, what that will generate, how that will help us with that. But we just wanted to bring up some of those projects that you're all still talking about, and the possibility of maybe during budget, talking about doing something the board used to do, which is putting aside some funding every year for grant match. Because obviously, if we can get something done for 75% and only have to pay 10% of it, and it's something we have to do, that would be great. But we know coming to, just out of the blue and asking for $10 million, is not doable at this point. So we're hoping that's a conversation we can have. And again, I just want to say, we really do appreciate working with all the constitutional officers. We have to have their budgets to do ours. It is a big part of our budget, as you saw. And so thank you all very much for working with us and doing that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Erin. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, Madam Chair.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. It's my understanding that the House Bill 7017 is related to the discount for veterans and other senior citizens. I think our budgets are due May 1st? June 1st onto the county. But do you, because we have a significant, and excuse my ignorance, I don't know the numbers, but I, it's... I believe we have a significant veterans population in Citrus County. So do we have a timeline of possibly when that estimate would be determined, the impact?
I don't. Like I said, we were able to calculate it with the Property Appraiser's Office when it was just going to be an additional $25,000, like across the board. And I think it's something, you know, legal's gonna have to look at just for clarification, but I don't want to speak for the Property Appraiser's Office and say if they, you know, what they will or won't be able to do as far as looking at that and doing a calculation.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No?
Madam Chair. When you calculated at the $25,000, what, do you have, do you remember that number?
Yes, so the Property Appraiser's Office went through all of the properties and put in the conditions, and they were able to pull out that dollar figure. And so it was about $6 million is how it would have affected us this year, if it had gone through that way.
So a $6 million deficit?
Overtuction, yeah.
Overtuction, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning, Commissioner Kennard.
Good morning.
Did you go to the courthouse? I almost did.
No, I went to Mr. Bill's boot camp.
Oh, yes.
Even worse.
Even worse. I turned towards the courthouse, I'm like, hang on, it's telling me to go to LGB. So, okay, so Mr. Eric Landon.
Good morning, everyone. I don't have a formal presentation, but I just wanted to be available to answer any questions that you may have on growth, and what that looks like, and trends, and kind of what direction we're going. Also wanted to share that we have some really good tools on the county's website. There's some GIS maps that show all the large projects that have been approved, and Kat just pulled it up. So for those that aren't familiar, the county has a series of maps on the website, and one of them is Growing Citrus, and it has about a dozen or more developments. And as you scroll up, you can click on each individual project, and it'll zoom in on it, and you can get more detail. We've seen a change in permits, maybe the type, not so much the number of permits. The permits have been really consistent since 2020, as far as the number of permits we issue. Now, you've seen some more high-profile ones, if you look at like Target or Panda Express here in La Canto. But the number of permits have stayed really, really consistent since 2020. Which is great that we've seen some more commercial growth, which means that we'll start to counterbalance, you know, the burden on residential. But it takes a great, a good number of years to absorb that. And then, you know, just listening to the community, they talk about the huge developments, or some of the larger developments that we've approved in recent times. And those sometimes can take decades to be absorbed into the economy. So, you know, when you talk of, talk to developers that have 1,000 or 2,000 dwelling units, they talk about 10, 20, 30 years to absorb. So it's a marathon, not a sprint, when you think about these larger projects. You know, a lot of the projects, a lot of the permits that we're approving today were approved 10, 20, 30 years ago. So it's a really long game as far as approving some of these large developments, and when you actually see the impact to the local economy. But anyway, I just wanted to share some information that we have readily available, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone? Commissioner Bayes?
Do you have any idea what the county's population was in 2008?
I don't. I don't. You know, I've seen estimates from the census for 2024. I think it was 173,000, something like that, for today.
Can someone Google that real fast?
I tried, and it's...
I'm working on it.
Yeah, it's...
Google knows everything, right?
It didn't, it didn't. In 2008, oh, it says 141,000. I was just trying to do the comparison on numbers when we talk about if we had 141,000.
I think we should be, just based on the census data I looked at, they always give like estimates, I think we're just over 170, or that's what they're anticipating.
And I saw something, I'm not sure where I saw it the other day, and I think they're anticipating our growth by 2030 to be an additional 35,000 residents.
Now, as Erin stated, we're averaging between 1,500, 2,000 new residential permits a year, and that's been pretty consistent since 2020.
Well, the chamber has it, the State Chamber, has the population estimate at 187, 800, but when I was on something else, another forecast, it was 35,000 people. That seems a little hefty, but...
So if you do, each dwelling unit's about 2.5 is kind of the standard. So, you know, for every 2,000 residential permits you issue a year, then you multiply it times 2.5. So it's definitely growing, but I think sometimes people, when they see a thousand dwelling unit development, they're like, oh, my gosh, that's gonna happen next year. It takes, it takes a good bit of time for the permitting and the infrastructure and the plating, and then actual the absorption of how fast they can be built. It's not an overnight project.
So the other point of that is, it's not just the new construction. A lot of these roads, specifically for Rock Crusher, there's 900-plus homes, and then in the newspaper recently, that was 100 single homes and 300 apartments. That road doesn't have the capacity for that. Same as 491, I mean, with 7,000 homes and 250,000 square feet of commercial. And we're not done on 491, I don't think.
Certainly, certainly...
Where we're building now.
Certainly concern for the existing infrastructure we have. If you're, it's something that needs to be strategically planned, because a lot of these developments, they will come, but it'll take, you know, you have some time. It, you know, may take 10, 20, 30 years, but they are on the way. So we certainly need to pay attention to the infrastructure we have.
Do you know how we compare, I mean, I know we... Our impact fees, we can only do once every four years.
And this time next year, we'll be due for an impact fee study, so we're working on the RFQ right now.
Are we limited to the amount that we can raise those at any one time?
The statutes do have certain provisions that do put limitations on how much you can increase it. I don't want to get too much in the weeds off the top of my head, but there are caps that are set.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, approving a development does not keep them from having higher impact fees, correct? It's the permit that triggers that? If they pull a permit and then we raise them after, then that's lost, yes.
So we did an increase in October of last year for transportation. So anyone that applied the day before, it went into effect, usually the old rate, but then the day after, then they were on the new rate. And that was based on when they made application.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead.
And just for clarification, when we had the conversation about concurrency, we decided at that point, because of the way the law's written now, we would have to bring all of our roads currently up to capacity before we could put concurrency back in place. Is that accurate?
Correct, including state roads.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica Campsher?
Morning, Commissioners, guests. This is just an opportunity for us to discuss something that will affect most of the people in this room, which is our space needs analysis. And I'll just wait for that to full screen, or would you like to drive, Mr. Bridges? All right, we're in business. My clicker even works. Okay, so just a brief introduction and history of this project. There's been a lot of interest in the multiple buildings that are in the Citrus County inventory for quite some time. And I believe that the number one item of interest was our courthouse, as well as our La Canto Government Building, which we'll talk about in just a moment. But from those needs, we have went ahead and added space needs analysis as a target for action, which was actually something that was identified by you guys in January of this year at your commission retreat. In February, a presentation was given to you, and you approved the use of ARPA funding for this analysis. And currently, we have a vendor finalizing a scope of services for the study, which we anticipate getting in our hands today. So this analysis will address those two priority areas that I mentioned, as well as some other key facilities. We do have over 100 buildings in our current inventory, so it is going to be a heavy lift. But the consultant has brought it down to these three buckets, just to try and kind of get that, get a handle around the most important and the most heavily utilized items that we have in our inventory. The facilities that are included in those campuses are the courthouse and the Coca-Cola building for Inverness, the La Canto Government Building, and the UF IFAS Extension Building, which is across the parking lot as you come in. And then a few other of our larger key facilities, including the Central Citrus Resource Center. That is where our Employee Health Clinic is located, as well as the VA offices. The newly acquired Nature Coast EMS Admin Building and Maintenance Building, which will be the future location for our Water Resources Team. And then the West Citrus Government Center, which is also known as Meadowcrest. The project stakeholders for this analysis include all of the current tenants of those buildings, anyone who we are currently giving space to, or has demonstrated a need for future space. And this is the timeline that's been provided with the scope that we currently have. It should be about a six-month process, once we're able to initiate that. There are three tasks. The first one is analyzing the space needs and departmental workflow, getting an inventory of what's currently there and how it's being used. The second is assessing the current building and infrastructure conditions. Do we have what we need, or is expansion needed? Kind of like Ms. Doran commented on earlier. And then number three is developing a plan that will outline all of those current inventory items and future needs as well. And if we apply that six-month period to our current timeline, we are hoping to get that work authorization approved May fourteenth. We will begin the space needs analysis with our vendor in June. Task one will be complete by August 2024. So, by the time we hit August, all of our partners will have been interviewed, given their needs, wants, and future ideas about expansion. And then they'll be able to go ahead and complete task number two, and get us that final analysis by February 2025. We anticipate to have that in hand by then. Of course, it takes a little bit of time to get it onto your agenda, so we're expecting to have that in front of the Board of County Commissioners by March of 2025.
Didn't you say it was six months total?
Six months total, but I believe for the holidays involved in that period, we've given a little bit of additional time, as well as for board deadlines. So, the six months, if I'm not mistaken, will be that completion of task three should be the end of January. And there will be a little bit of back and forth in that last two-month period, just to ensure that staff and the vendor are on the same page before we present that to the commission. And that's all I've got, just a quick overview, so you guys know what timeline you're working with as you go into this budget cycle.
Questions? Anyone?
I do.
Commissioner Schleber?
So, you know, I'm not a government person, so I appreciate your presentation, but by March of 2025, we'll know what space the judges need, but we won't have the space the judges need. So, it's just, nothing to do with you, Veronica, but it's so frustrating. So.
So, as I mentioned, we are finalizing that scope, so I can take those concerns back to our facilities management team, and we can discuss the possibility of expediting that process. But as we've gone through this, the six-month period is really what the consultant has given us for the timeline.
Thank you.
Would there be a possibility of segregating out the judicial portion of it to put that on a fast track?
I can certainly bring that back to facilities and discuss that. As mentioned, the courthouse is priority one, so I believe that that is their plan to focus heavily on that at the beginning, but I can see if they can break that out a little more specifically in order to make that work better for the team.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Okay. Judge Spate?
Well, actually, actually, I'm gonna start out if it would be all right.
Oh, okay, yeah, absolutely.
And I want to say first, thank you very much to the commission for agreeing to give us an opportunity to discuss the space needs of the judicial branch. I'm gonna be remiss if I don't introduce one very important player who's here with us today, and that is our Court Operations Manager, Kathy Rector, who's sitting over in the front row. She is the lady who has the very unkind task of trying to coordinate the use of four fully functional courtrooms, which we have in our courthouse, among all of the judicial officers. Now, today you have a very small complement of all the officers that actually function in the courtroom. And I'm gonna go ahead and mention the others, just so you have an understanding of all of the people that are vying for very, very limited judicial space. We've got Circuit Court Judge Joel Fritton, Circuit Court Judge Kristi Heelis, County Judge Charles Helm. He just got an elevation. He will be leaving us and going to Lake County, but we will have a replacement for him. We're hopeful he'll come back. So, we greatly appreciate the service he's given the county in the time that he's been here, but I think we're very hopeful he'll come back. We also have our General Magistrate, who is Keith Schenk. Then we have a Child Support Hearing Officer, Levette Vasquez. We have a Traffic Court Hearing Officer, Robert Christensen. And then we have several, multiple, different senior judges that come and sit in our courthouse to help us with the work that we do. So, as you can imagine, we have four fully functional courtrooms and a host of judicial officers that continually vie for that space. And Kathy's the one that actually, from a day-to-day basis, and there's a constant tension of who needs a courtroom and whether we have space to accommodate their needs. At this point, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to our County Judge, Ed Spate. And the reason I asked him to come and speak to you rather than doing it myself is because he is one of the two county judges who do not enjoy adequate judicial space. And I know you're familiar with him, because you see him probably anytime you're in county commission space. He's the one that's occupying what used to be your county conference room. And so, given that he's one of the most affected judges by the space needs crunch, I think he's in a great position to address what it's like to be a judge who does not have adequate space. And with that said, Judge Spate?
Okay, so, as Judge Falvey just said, judiciary in Citrus County, we've got four circuit judges, three county judges, a general magistrate, a child support hearing officer, the traffic court hearing officer, there's senior judges that come in and out from time to time. So, we've got five courtrooms for seven judges, plus the senior judges, and three judicial officers, and every day there are scheduling issues. Not enough space for the seven judges in five courtrooms.
Judge, what is a judicial officer? They need a courtroom to themselves?
So, there's the child support hearing officer, there's the traffic court hearing officer, he camps out in the jar every other Friday.
Not my bailiwick, so I just wanted clarification that they need a courtroom to, just like a judge, okay?
Yeah, like child support officer. It's just people coming in and.
Makes perfect sense.
Judge?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Finnegan, Commissioner, oh.
Schleber?
Yeah, she.
For certain of those courtroom situations, is it a mass gathering of people that they hear, and then they take them one by one? Or does it need to be a smaller room where there's maybe a handful of people in there at a time? They leave, a handful of people come in?
So, the short answer is yes. So, criminal court, like felony court, for example, you're gonna have a hundred people coming in, and it's cattle call, just, you know, person after person after person. County court, same thing for misdemeanors. Judge Carney does the in custody misdemeanor cases. He actually goes to the jail. I don't know if y'all have seen the courtroom out at the jail. But he goes out there pretty much once a week, and just, so rather than transport the inmates, he does the mass cattle call there once a week. Other, it depends, you know. My cases, I do mostly Zoom now. But that would pretty much be one person at a time in the courtroom, or one case at a time in the courtroom, one after the other, after the other, after the other.
Well, I was thinking with traffic and child support.
Those are the cattle call kind of dockets.
I thought child support would be more private, is that not? Just maybe injunctions are probably the only ones.
It's a big cattle call for child support.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Injunctions are one after the other, after the other.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schleber?
I liked your report better. You said five courthouses. I wrote down what Judge Falvey said, four.
So.
I just wanna, I'm a numbers person.
Yeah, it's a distinction.
So, in the, we'll call it the new part of the courthouse, there's four courtrooms, A, B, C, D.
Yes.
There's also courtroom E up on the third floor. It's directly above where your offices are. Courtroom E, I've heard, this one here. It is very nineteen seventy. It is, it's old, it's falling apart. I think the door on the witness box is actually lying on the ground under the, we're gonna get to there. So, that's courtroom E. You probably don't get up to the third floor much.
And not to interrupt, Ed, but with courtroom E, there is no jury deliberation room, so you could not hold a jury trial there. There is no holding room for an inmate, so you can't hold anything where you have someone in custody. So, when I say fully functional courtrooms, those are the ones that are all on the second and third floor in the new section of the courthouse, and they are fully functional. They're small in the sense that if, for example, I try Circuit Civil cases, which could be medical malpractice cases, nursing home cases, products liability cases. Many of those cases involve multiple parties. A lot of times, the parties will settle before you go to court. One of my worst concerns is, what am I gonna do if I ever get the medical malpractice case, the nursing home case, the products case that might have five different defendants? Each one of those parties is entitled to a separate counsel table. Right now, we can't accommodate that. We can accommodate two counsel tables, and if you ever spend time in a courtroom, you'll go see they're set up for that. I just had a medical malpractice case that I tried last fall, up to the point of trial. It looked like we were gonna go with more than two sets of parties, which would mean that we literally bring out the kids' table for the Thanksgiving dinner, a prop-up table, and someone is gonna have to sit at that prop-up table, which is, it gives the jury an impression that one party is a lesser party. So, I don't know if we ever get to the point where we have a multi-party piece of litigation, and there are several that are on my docket now, much more so civil than criminal. I have no idea where we're gonna put them. But it'll be very awkward. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And if any of you ever want to see, you know where to find me, right down the hall from y'all, I could take you and show you, you know, what's in courtroom A and B compared to upstairs. You know, behind courtroom A, you go the one way, you've got the holding cells with the elevator down to the Sallyport. On the other side, you've got the judicial chambers, and then the jury deliberation rooms back there. E, the one, we're gonna get there again in a second, has none of those things. There's an old holding cell, but you can't bring somebody in shackles through the courthouse to get to there.
So, four courthouses that can handle.
Courtrooms.
Courtrooms, sorry.
Four courthouses would be awesome.
We would have no problem. Four courtrooms that can handle jury and a holding cell?
Yes.
Yes.
And then one courtroom that can handle that, and one jail courthouse? So, I'm at six, but really.
We can't take civil cases out to the jail.
No, I know, but I'm.
And we can't conduct jury trials out of the jail. Reason being is, if you want to give a fair and impartial trial, having a trial in a jail where jurors drive up with razor wire, it's really not in keeping with what the US Constitution envisions as a fair and impartial trial. Doesn't give the jury the right impression.
So, we really only have four?
Four, yeah, and a half.
Okay, you said five, I liked your number, but we're four.
Really, four and a half.
And we also do make use of the jar, which I think you're familiar with, is on the first floor, and our traffic court hearing officer will use that. We've been as creative as we can be. Judge Spate and I went over to the old historic courthouse, thinking that perhaps there would be some opportunity to try a jury trial over there, because that's where the real problem is. We need a courtroom that has a jury deliberation room, and there is none over there. They have taken it over to store things, and so there's no spot for the jury to deliberate. We thought about if we held a trial over there, perhaps we could ask everybody to evacuate the facility, and then lock the jurors in the courtroom, so there would be no access to anyone. The difficulty is, every time we'd go in and out during the court proceedings, they would have to be re-screened by the bailiffs. Everyone would have to be hand-wanded each and every time we took a break, because there just isn't a central entrance and exit point, and the concern for security would be too great.
And my final thought, I think that's where the commissioner should be, the historical, and then you could have more room.
Yeah, we tried. I thought it'd be kind of cool to do, you know, like a trial in that old courthouse. It'd be a neat place to do it, but there's just too many practical concerns, you know, even from, not only the security, the wiring. It's not hooked into the computer system. We'd have to bring a Wi-Fi. Yeah, we really tried to make that work.
We'd have to tote a whole team of clerks and security staff over in order to accommodate that. So, we've looked at it and just determined it's really not functional.
What are the, what's the square footage need for another fully functional courtroom, and would our space work for that?
Candidly, and you can speak to this, because he's actually put pen to paper, but I think our thought is, the only way this works, we get some relief if you all vacate your space.
Including our attorney and everyone, that we all, that whole section does.
Be OCC on the second floor, that would be a great help, but that's still not enough for two judicial officers, and that's what we need right now. So, the other thought would be to ask the public defender to find space out off premises. And then, if you folks wanted to stay in the building, we're trying to think of any solution. One solution would be that you move in where the Guardian Ed Lightum is, and there might be enough office space down there to accommodate the county commission. Then you're still in the building, and then that addresses your concerns about security. We're trying to be helpful. We're trying to think of ways to get this accomplished, but I can tell you that we've got very urgent space needs, and it's a daily struggle trying to find where to put trials. And these things have to be scheduled months in advance, so that the lawyers know when they're coming, and that there will be an available courtroom. Sometimes what happens is the cases settle before they get to trial, and then nobody uses it. But oftentimes, we don't know that until the Friday before a Monday trial. All right, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ed.
So, to answer the question, was it, Fisher Davis just asked that last question?
Yeah, the square footage.
So, courtroom E is actually a very good illustrative example. It is literally directly above you. Like I say, I'm sure you guys don't get up to the third floor much, but courtroom E is right above you, and basically takes up the footprint that we would be talking about for the courtroom itself. Plus, we'd need to, you know, go beyond that. If we're gonna, probably not putting a holding cell on that side of the building, practically it's not gonna work, but we would need like a jury deliberation room off of the courtroom to make it work. E's right above you, and, let me see if I, yeah. I'll back up here. So, we could put a courtroom on, in your space, on the second floor, right below where E is. We could mirror that on the other side where the public defender is, straight across the hall from y'all, and get two courtrooms, two judicial chambers, two jury deliberation rooms. That would fit in that footprint.
So, that gives you, so that gives you six and a half, right, so?
And then the, I'll just jump. So, that's our court, current facilities.
Four of which can hold a criminal.
Yes, and we've got two judges that basically do criminal work. We've got, I think we've got enough space with the holding cells, the way the Sallyport is, we could make those four courtrooms work as long as we've got space on the other side to do civil stuff.
And can the courtroom E be rehabbed and have a jury deliberation room added to it?
I think so.
Okay.
I think we could make that work. It's actually a fairly decent-sized space. I've got a satsi. That's taken from sort of right behind the well of the courtroom. So, there's seating behind it. That's the jury box to the left up there. There's the two tables and the, it's an interesting way to access the bench. It's actually dangerous, yeah. It's a narrow little staircase that pops up to it. But what we, what are we, what's our ask gonna be, okay? Essentially, modify the second floor to build two new courtrooms and judicial chambers. Like I said, I think one would fit very nicely in the space that you would be vacating. Exactly opposite, the public defender has a very similar footprint to yours. And they take up, I think they would take up the similar space, and we could put two courtrooms, much like we have on the newer side of the courthouse. You have courtroom courtroom, judges' chambers, and the stuff behind the jury deliberation rooms, et cetera. And then. And then we could update and modernize E to make that a, basically a seventh functioning courtroom. We would have seven courtrooms for seven judges.
Judge, was the public defender's office always at the courthouse? I thought it was not.
So, and the public defender's here, and Mr. Graves has been with that office, what, 30 years now? So, he's got a little bit more of the history than I do. But my understanding is that they were in the Coke building-
Yeah, that's what I thought.
At one point. I was there for almost 15 years. We've always, I was always in the courtroom, or the space on the second floor.
So, and you all would know better, but it never quite made sense to me with the public defender being there and the state attorney's office being there, and potentially you have two adverse parties there, possibly a perpetrator and possibly a victim. You all decide which is which, but coming into the courthouse possibly at the same time, I mean, does it make sense to have both offices at the courthouse?
So, for convenience, it's good to have both of them at the courthouse.
But convenient for who?
But I'm aware, and Mr. Graves asked, answering questions on that one. Of the five counties in the circuit, three of the public defender's offices are off-campus. And two of them, Citrus and Hernando, are in the courthouse. We're on separate floors from the state attorney's office, you know.
Same elevator?
Same elevator, I'm sure they run into the parking lot sometimes, I mean, it happens. But, yeah, you'll, I don't know that Mr. Graves would be unwilling to move out of the courthouse as long as he had a place to go that wasn't too far away.
Well, just what's best for citizens and what is best for our deputies with less incidents. I think that we should take a look at all of that also.
Yeah. But so, what we're looking, what we're asking to do is modify the second floor of the courthouse to build two new courtrooms and chambers and the jury rooms, and then modernize E. And like I said, anytime, I'm right down the hall. Anytime I hear you in the building, you want to, you know, walk around the courthouse and see what E looks like and kind of what the footprint we're thinking about looks like. Go back and see what, you know, A and B are on the same floor as y'all. You could go down there and see, here's the more modern courtroom. That's Courtroom A right there. That's what, you know, the inside of the courtroom looks like. It's, the courtroom physically is actually not that big. We can fit them into the courthouse and meet our needs for at least the foreseeable future. We are way out of space.
Is, are any of them large enough to have a trial with four parties?
No.
No? Four-party tables?
Right, I don't know what we do when we have one of those that goes. I've thought about perhaps contacting Marion County, asking for space over there if we really have to have one of those big multi-party trials go. Because we just cannot accommodate it. And that would entail busing people, jurors, and whatnot. But civil is different. The lawyers can travel there themselves, the parties can travel there themselves. The county's only obligation would be to see to it that the jurors get there.
Okay.
We're doing what we can, what we can do now. I mean, I do most of my hearings currently on Zoom. You know, heck, just on Friday, I had to stop a hearing in the middle because the parties just weren't taking it seriously. And had to find a courtroom for next, you know, sometime this week to actually bring them in and, you know, do the hearing in court. You know, Zoom is working, but it's not what we need.
Makes complete sense. Any other commissioner comments? No?
We look forward to working with you on the study, but as Judge Falvey alluded to, I mean, that timeline's a year. I don't know when six months turns into a year, but we need space yesterday.
And just to give you some historical background, I know we first went to the commission about this in July of 2021. And now here we are, here we are three years later, and I know you were all very generous with us trying to look at the Coke building as an alternative. It just didn't work out because of security issues. And we're cognizant of the financial considerations. We recognize that. But in the meantime, we've got two county judges that are working in space that is just not appropriate for judicial officers. But more importantly, we don't have the courtroom space to accommodate the trial needs that we have. So Kathy can tell you, it is a daily, daily fight over who are we going to put where in what courtroom today. And we've had to even reassign cases because judges cannot get courtroom space. Judge Howard has taken a case that one of the other judges could not find courtroom space, given her schedule, and so he had to take it so that he could get it tried. But we're doing everything we can, whether it's Zoom, whether it's using the jar, whether it's using the courtroom at the jail. We're trying to make as many out-of-the-box solutions, if you will, to try to resolve our needs and keep our business going. So we're really, we're really trying to hit it, but we need some help, and it is urgent. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? All good? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Do you have an objection if I just sit here? Okay, good. Since this is a discussion amongst friends and colleagues, right? Thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity. We appreciate the opportunity to participate. I believe that this is a, you know, it's a visionary exercise. It's an inspired visionary exercise to sit down and talk about our space needs, try to get ahead of the curve. You know, unfortunately, we start out way behind, right? 20 years behind. That's typically the, some, unfortunately, that typically is the timeframe that we're in. You know, we're trying to catch up, and it makes it very, very difficult. You should both have, all of you should have memos that we provided in reference to-
Can you hold on just one second?
Sure.
I'm so sorry, judges need to depart, I understand.
Yeah, is there a need to keep us here? We don't want to be disrespectful to you or to the other constitutional officers, but we certainly wouldn't mind giving back.
Does any of your presentation involve the judges?
I don't think so directly.
Okay, all right, well, thank you again very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too.
So I'll continue then? Thank you. So you should, all of you should have memos prepared by my chief of staff, Tracy Phillips, in reference to the Clerk's Capital Improvement Plan and the space needs. This is really just, it's all informational. We do understand that the work of the consultant with regard to space needs is going to be, much of this is going to hinge on that. What we chose to do, as we have done historically, and Commissioner Kennard may be the only one on this board familiar with this. We, first of all, very much appreciate the contemplative thought that is going into this. I know that it is, it's difficult, you know, to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. It's a, it's a very difficult endeavor. But we appreciate being able to sit at the table and also that we are, we are trying to collectively put an idea together. Always keeping in mind that it's, you know, like Mr. Langdon said earlier, with regard to the development in our county, you know, it is, it's a marathon, not a sprint. It takes a long time to put all these plans together and come up with something that's going to work for everyone. What, in the memo that we provided to you, we are specifically referencing guidance that's provided by the Florida Administrative Code with regard to space needs. This formula, this methodology, is, I hesitate to use the word, but it's more scientific than just anecdotal needs. We're trying to give you more of an idea of exactly what our space needs would be. And this is projected out over a five, is it five, Tracy?
Five years.
Yeah, a five-year period for the space needs for the clerk of court. We currently, as you're aware, are, I have 60 employees approximately in the 65 employees in the courthouse. Is it 77 there now? Oh, sheesh, 77 employees in the courthouse. I know, where do all those people come from, Tracy? And trust me, to echo Judge Bates's comments, of those of you that haven't taken the opportunity on the board, I would invite you to come and walk through the space of the clerk's office, and you will see that we are quite efficient at using every square inch of space. It would be, it will be startling to some of you when you see it. It to, the limited space that we have 77 people in. We have 32 employees at the annex and four employees in the Metacrest building. And these, this is what the current space needs looks like, but based on the recommendation, according to these tables that are provided, we are, you know, already in deficit for the space needs that's recommended for a comfortable area for an employee to work and be productive in that environment. We look forward to being able to provide this information to the consultant. I was a little, I did have a question. I'm assuming, it looks, it said that the vendor is finalizing on the presentation that Veronica provided. She indicated that the vendor is finalizing that scope of services by April the 24th, which has passed already. So I would assume that the opportunity for this type of detailed information will be, will be given over the next, you know, once it's awarded, once we have a recommendation, we can, we'll sit down and those types of detail, that type of detail will be provided, we can have a conversation about that, okay? I think it's important for the consultant or the professional that will be doing the, this particular study, would be aware of those. I don't know if this is the most recent, because there is a typo on that that I corrected in the last one that I sent. So I'm assuming that it is, this is, the numbers are right, right, Tracy?
The numbers are correct.
Long as the-
And I apologize, the PowerPoint may not have gotten updated with the typo, but the memo-
Got it. Okay, so our numbers, that's all we care about.
The numbers are correct, they did not change.
Okay, good, so our numbers are correct on it, okay.
And can I just add that when we look at those numbers, it doesn't include public use space, which you guys see on your memo, but for the audience, they do not see it. But it doesn't include public use space like our reception or service counters. The calculation from the Department of Management Services, it doesn't include restrooms, mailroom, conference rooms, anything like that. This is just space for our employees to work.
You may not be aware that we, and again, Commissioner Kennard is intimately familiar with the space needs battles that we, oh, wait a minute, I shouldn't use that word. Space conversations, discussions related to space needs. The area that is currently the Guardian Edelweiss and the Sheriff's Civil Division, we occupied a portion of that and gave that space up in 2015 in order to accommodate the Circuit Civil Division. And that is what propelled us over to the annex when we had to move 32 employees. So we gave up a significant footprint in the courthouse. So when you talk about the annex, when statements are made related to, why is the clerk in three different places? Because I don't have space for 33 people to be in my current, in the current building. The annex has worked very, very well for us. The fact that the types of services that are offered by the clerk's office, that are provided by the clerk's office, individuals that are coming in to record deeds, to record death certificates, to get a passport, to have a conversation with the internal audit, someone in internal audit related to a probate case. They handle the guardianship cases and do the audits of the guardianships, and there might be conversations there. It does not have security. It makes a little bit more, it's an easier access for those types of services that are being provided. Those constituents that are coming into the courthouse, they're there for a completely different need. It is a completely different environment, and so the need for security is there. So the annex has worked very well for the different types of services that the clerk is required constitutionally to provide. The Metacrest office is a satellite office, that's a full-service office, that's providing pretty much all of the same opportunities for an individual to file a case, pay a traffic ticket, get a passport, get a marriage license, record a document. They have all of those same accesses. It's just not where court is taking place, or where the county commission meetings are taking place, et cetera. So our proximity in the courthouse to currently the county commission to provide services and support that we do there, as well as the services and support for our judicial, the interaction that we have with the state attorney, with the public defender, all of that hub is taking place in your, in the courthouse. So the bifurcation of the duties of the clerk was a very natural separation, so that your court operations that are taking place and the support for those, it's very natural to be where that location where we are. With regard to the annex, those types of services are different. They are more public, not many of them are public-facing. All of the financial services that are being provided for the county, you know, all of your payroll, all of your finance, your internal audit, all of the, and the official records are all taking place in that building. Right now, today, our goal is to just provide you the information on a high-level summary basis, just for informational purposes and edification, because I, this is an education process as well for anyone who hasn't been through this type of a detail of a space needs analysis. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have in relation to this, but I believe that we're all going to be best served once we get to the next phase of this with the consultant. We can, we can sit down with the consultant, and they can have a more comprehensive understanding of what our duties are. And of course, I think we can agree as well that we would always be open to suggestions. You know, if there, if your hope is that a consultant in this industry would possibly be able to make recommendations, and if there, you know, if something that, recommendations regarding use of space. I will draw the line, though, at double stacking the people. I can't double stack my people, I'm just, I'm just going to say that, you know. Like a bunk bed, you know, you have little stairs that go up to the, yeah, I'm not, I can't, we can't do that. But, so that, that covers our space needs, and Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions on that particular area. If anyone has any?
Commissioners? Slaver?
What is your total, how many employees do you have total?
I think it's 113 right now. Did I add that correctly, Tracy? 113.
That's what I came up with, too, I just, I didn't know if there were some that worked Monday through, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, courthouse, and then went Tuesday, Thursday to the annex, so. I just wanted to make sure my number was right.
So we, we have 113 employees. There are some of our employees that may float between the offices. For instance, if we have a call out in Metacrest, we're going to have to transport somebody over from maybe the courthouse or the annex to cover that shift. We do have one director who oversees all our customer service counters, and she does go from, her main office is at the courthouse, so we've not counted her twice. We have a shared office for her, our administrative staff, myself, and HR at the annex. And then when she does frequent Metacrest, and even when I frequent Metacrest, most of the time, I'm sitting on the counter, because there isn't an additional space for us to sit.
Well, that was just my personal audit, and you passed with flying colors, so thank you. We do, and to your point, Commissioner, thank you for that question. The, we do have employees that work four-tens. We utilize every opportunity for remote, if someone can work remotely. There are some employees, are we still in this environment where they desk share?
We do have some employees that are desk sharing, yes.
So we are, we've utilized every opportunity to reduce our footprint as much as possible. So there aren't a lot of open stations where there, there, there isn't, they aren't in use or there's planned usage for those, so.
Well, I appreciate it. I've actually been to all three buildings. And you guys have for services or whatever and our meetings, so I appreciate that. Short of, I think it's gonna come to the Commissioner's desk sharing, but, you know, we gotta find some space, and that's a tough one. I was hoping that there would be some space in the annex, but it says that you are below the recommended square feet.
So I would just, I'll add a comment to that. I do believe that there are areas in the annex with some renovation that could afford us some additional space. When we went into that building, they did not remodel it. They left it as is, so we used the office spaces that were there. Especially in our IA department, I believe it could be reconfigured to add another office or potentially a couple other, a desk or two. In the front, there probably is not any area where our customer service counter and the desk space behind there. I, I just think there is a little bit of potential there.
Thank you.
Does Metacrest have any empty space contiguous with your space there?
So we have one desk in the back that we have, we do have employees that will rotate out of that. But, and we have two counter spaces available, but other than that, we have no other space there. So no additional office, no meeting area. We have a manager's office and then the two.
I, I haven't gotten an update in a while, but last I heard we had empty space in Metacrest? But it's not contiguous with what you currently have?
The space that is contiguous is where the property appraiser uses that training room, which we wanted that space. But, you know, Craig came in and planted his flag, and, you know, we didn't get it, so.
Craig's not here to defend that space now, is he?
I know, I know. You know, I noticed he wasn't here today, so if we could just advance this conversation while we're here. If I could get a decision, oh, wait, inappropriate. That is the only space that is contiguous to us. The bathrooms are on the back side of the, the, the office. And as you can see, you know, it's a very, it's an extremely limited footprint. It works well, because we've, we did re, did some work out there last year to reconfigure it for proper, you know, spacers for the customers, you know, to make sure that they had space there. But it's very, it's very limited. We do, to, kudos to our property appraiser and his partnership. We have utilized that space beside of us for training, and it's on offer all the time, so it allows us that opportunity. And the conference rooms, you know, we're always calling on Craig to use, we've been in that conference room together, you know, to utilize the conference rooms that he has. So I would say that, you know, with your constitutionals, you have a very collegial relationship where we all try to really work together. And I know that Mo's space is, is more, our supervisor's space is a little more restricted, you know, for access to that. But we were, we try to work very, very closely together to share the space that we have that can be like utilization as much as we possibly can. But I, there isn't any space in Metacrest right now that I could see that we could contiguous, that we could expand.
Is there space for Mr. Dalton to move his training room? Is it somewhere else in Metacrest? No?
I don't think so, unless you want to give him the warehouse in the back somewhere. Oh, wait, not yours, Mo.
Craig cannot have my warehouse.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Tracy, did you have anything else to?
Not on the space needs.
Okay.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation, or?
We were gonna talk about, you had asked for looking at our capital improvement, our five-year strategic plan. We have submitted our CIP to management and budget, Department of Management and Budget, and those expenses are solidified. For projection for twenty-six to twenty-nine, those, those expenses are, based on projected cost, we used as much statistics and historical data as we could to come up with that. Knowing that inflation, software needs, hardware comes up, we do try to plan for those as best as we can. The main thing that we wanted to bring is you'll see our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five CIP is, is actually a little less than what it was in twenty-three, twenty-four. That has to do with server rotations. We don't need a, a different server increase. And, and some of our hardware needs went down for this upcoming year. However, I wanted to go ahead and point out to you that starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, and then for the three years following that, you'll see quite an increase. We've been in discussions with Department of Management and Budget with regards to our financial software. And we do plan on going out to an RFP for that in two thousand twenty-five. That is because the support is going to end in July of twenty-six. And then the server systems that are currently supporting that software are going to come to end of life in January twenty-seven. So we don't really have a choice in this in going out to a bid for another financial software. That cost of the nine hundred, it's roughly nine hundred thousand is what we've projected. Now, that is just our best educated guess based on different vendors that we have looked at without going through the formal bid process yet. And what we did was instead of paying that all upfront, is we divided it up to, into the three years. So that was the major cost that we foresee. You can see in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it starts to come back down, and that's just our normal maintenance and, and server rotations and data storage and such. So that was the main thing that we wanted to bring forward today with regards to future projections.
More good news.
At least this year.
Yes. That is.
Commissioner Schleber?
So the financial software, you've got it in fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-eight?
We did that, we divided it out by three years. A lot of vendors will work with you when there are bigger ticketed items like that, not to charge interest or anything, but allow you to break up the process, the payments. Also, because we are looking at a financial ERP system, some of them may be module-driven. So as we add those other modules, that could, we may just have to pay for those at that time. It's kind of hard without going through the actual bid process yet to give you a firm of number and what the vendor is going to require. But just historically, knowing how we've worked with vendors in the past, they typically let us divide that out with no interest. So it's just, they just divide out the payments.
And the, it's not called the end of life for that financial software that you have now, but what, what year did you say that that was gonna?
So actually, what they, the vendor is going to stop supporting the financial software we are on in July of twenty-six.
Okay. Coming up.
Yes.
Commissioner Baze?
In your report, you indicated that Citrus County twenty-thirty population would be a hundred and seventy thousand to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And what your additional staffing needs would be, but our, our population now, according to Google, is just shy of a hundred and seventy-one thousand.
So we got that from the, if I recall correctly, that was from the Florida Chamber of Commerce. That's where this graph came from. It very well could have already exceeded that or be up to a hundred and seventy-one thousand. But this was, this, um, taken directly from the Florida Chamber of Commerce.
I just wanna make sure, if we're in the middle of a space needs and you're saying, based on population, what your staffing needs would be, that it would be adequately reflected going forward as opposed to trying to play ten years of catch-up again?
Yes. No, and we appreciate that. We took all of those things into consideration and the fact that these are estimates. So the hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and we used a lot of historical statistics, too, to come up with what our needs would be for employees, and I feel comfortable with what we've presented.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? All good?
Anything else on the CIP? Just wanna make sure that, space needs is really important, but CIP is going to be definitely more pressing, because that financial software is going to have to be replaced, so. And of course, our door is always open. I'm sorry, Commissioner Schleber?
Um, what I was gonna say is, the only thing I don't see is, you know, if there has to be money for remodeling, I, I think that probably should be added into the five-year plan.
So we had considered putting some of those requests. We, in fact, we did submit one request to Department of Management and Budget for this upcoming year. However, given the fact that we are going through the space needs study, we did not feel that we should include that, the remodel amount, because we don't know what the space needs consultant's gonna come back and recommend and that the board is going to want to do. So that is why we did not include any costs, like for a remodel at the annex to give us more space, because we don't know when the space needs consultant comes back, what their recommendation and what the, the pleasure of the board's gonna be.
That makes sense.
Well, you may recall last year, last year? Last year, it's something we were, we had asked for money for remodeling. And, and, you know, we were, we pivoted because we wanted to partner with the idea that we're gonna be looking at space needs, right? There, it, through the annual pro, there's an annual process where we submit to the facilities ma, facilities build, maintenance division where we need to have possible renovations. But I think you guys were very clear, and you don't wanna put, you know, lipstick on a pig or a Band-Aid on something. But sometimes, you know, you still gotta change the oil in the car. You know, you still have to replace something because it's still running until you can buy your new car. So I don't think we submitted, what did we, did we submit anything this year?
We did. We submitted a remodel for the admin. Was that it, Frank? Was it just an admin? Just an admin to allow us to better utilize some of that space and add another area and close in one area that would make another office. But we pulled that after talking with Erin because of the space needs.
So we don't have anything in this, so we don't have anything in this year. We're just trying to be patient and wait on the future.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mo?
I apologize, Madam Chair. I have a chiropractor appointment. So, okay, thank you.
It's not with Dr. Cannard, is it? Oh. You could just get a freebie.
That's awkward.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that, Rebecca.
I wasn't gonna say anything.
I'll just jump up on the table here. It's a conflict of interest.
Okay. Well, good morning, and thank you for having us here today. Thank you for this meeting. It's very helpful to me. First and foremost, I, I would like to thank the clerk's office. Without the help of the clerk's office, the Supervisor of Elections Office would, would need many more employees. The clerk's office steps up. They do all of our financials. They do many things for us. They, they help me with my end-of-life for hardware, software projects, and, and just thank you. Thank you, Angel. Thank you, Tracy. Your Department, Management and Budget as well, Erin, all of them are so very helpful to us. And we only have ten full-time employees. I have over four hundred and twenty-five election workers, part-time workers, and then ten full-time workers. And so with having only ten full-time employees, it's, it's so helpful to have them at, at our hand. Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you. So this meeting, I think, has shown me a lot of what other offices need as well, and, and where can we come in and help other offices as well as get our needs met. Some of the things that we have, I just wanna give you a quick update on the presidential preference primary election. Just so you know, we had a, our final results came out at seven twenty-six PM. We had eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five voters who voted that day. We had thirty-two polling locations, five early vote sites, over three hundred and fifty election workers. It doesn't matter how big the ballot is or how small the ballot, we still have to have our thirty-two precinct buildings, all of our election workers and early vote sites up and running. And for that, I am just so thankful for my staff who helps us get where we need to be on elections. And anyway, I just wanna give you a quick update on that. So some of the things I have in your packet here, I know one of them is our space needs. The packet that I gave you contains more than space needs, so I'll just start off at number one. Everybody had a packet in front of them. And the very first one I had here was the tabulation system upgrade. In this past year, we upgraded all of our, our hardware and software service for the tabulation system. This works a little differently now. We used to have to go out and purchase new tabulation system, but now I can upgrade what we have, so I've been trying to stay right on top of that. So last year, it was in the budget, and the upgrade wasn't ready yet. So I moved the money forward, and we just finished the upgrade before the presidential preference primary election, and had all the computers replaced, all the servers replaced. And so now our next is upgrading our, the rest of the tabulation system, which would be the, we've moved from DS two-hundreds to DS three-hundreds, and moved from DS, which are the tabulation scanners. And then we moved from the high-speed scanners, the DS eight-fifties to DS nine-fifties. The end total for those items are six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. It is in the number-one presentation that's in your packet. And I put that out there, and I also put the quotes behind it. Of course, there's some maintenance fees and yearly maintenance fees and those kind of things with that. I didn't add those in because we pay them anyway. We're paying them now, so that wouldn't be an add-on to the budget. One thing I did wanna talk about with the Supervisor of Elections budget is we, I, we are mandated by law of every single thing that we do. It's very helpful, because it's helpful in our budget. We have a budget book, okay, in our budget book. We give you a line-by-line item for every single thing that we need to purchase in our election. And we have a book with every single quote in it from everybody that we were going to receive those products from. In that, it helps us put a budget together that can be very precise. We, remember that all elections happen in hurricane season. Every one of our elections do. Just imagine that. And so there's some things I just can't budget for, you know, emergencies that could happen. We put everything we can into the budget, but if anything happens past that, I would have to come back to the board. One thing that you do do for us is we have either one election, two elections, or three elections in a, in a budget year. I'm coming off two elections, going to one election, but I'm going to one very major election. This election, I would expect at least an eighty percent turnout. And in that election, it costs more people, more time, more ballots, more money. And some of the things that we can't, we don't have control over right now is, how many ballots will this election cause me to have? The more ballots it costs me to have, the more postage it costs me to have, to mail, vote-by-mail ballots, to have ballots printed. So I give you everything in my budget that that would cost. Now, what happens is you also allow me to have a reserve fund. And the money that's left over from my budget is put into that reserve fund because my budget goes up and down and up and down. So right now, in, in, in that reserve fund, I'm setting at four hundred thousand, uh, four thou, uh, four hundred and, uh, four hundred thousand dollars, and that, almost four hundred and one thousand dollars. And so as we look at this, I want you to be able to see, because I drop everything into that reserve fund, and I believe that we can cover some of these things that we're looking for from that reserve fund money. Any questions on the tabulation? If not, I'm gonna run right through these. Yes, go ahead.
How much, how long did it take you to build up that four hundred thousand in your reserves?
Since I've been in office.
So.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Three and a half years.
Four years, yeah. Right about four years.
So if we use the whole. So, if we use the whole four hundred thousand this year for this election cycle, it's gonna take you another four, four years to build that up?
I, I would, I would think so.
Okay.
I, I would think so. Depending on the election type and, and what happens, if they call an election on us, if, if the county was to call an election on us, then we start, you know, at minus zero there. So, anyway, the tabulation upgrade, I don't want to do this before the 2024 elections. That is not something I, I'm going to do now. I wouldn't, I wouldn't implement something like that right now. But it's the next process, right? It would probably be about three point five million dollars to replace the voting system. I want you to keep that in mind as we move forward for some of the, some of the things that we have. The next one, do we have any other questions on tabulation? We can come back to that. The next item I have here is a fire suppression system. I have talked with Mr. Howard about this and the fire suppression system would be a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the fire suppression system would cover five areas of my office. The tabulation system, the tabulation room, the electrical room, the server room, the ballot room, and my high-density storage. As I was explaining to Mr. Howard, some of this, I can't recoup. And when we did a build-out to that building, we got a minimal amount of money to do a build-out. Since then, I've put over two hundred thousand dollars in grant, federal grant money, uh, non-matching federal grant money into the security of that building. I had to replace all the windows. I, I did securities cameras and, and sensors. I built archive caging. I've done many things in that building that makes that building secure. And right now, we're on, we're on high security. We stay on high security through an election season. Nobody comes in and out of my building unless they're badged and unless they're escorted by an employee. So, about this fire suppression system, the whole building was, I think, built in nineteen-eighty-four down in Metacrest. And it has the sprinklers, the water sprinklers that are in every room. And so, I cannot afford water sprinklers to be in my tabulation room or in my electrical room or in my server room or in my ballot room and most of all, in my high-density storage. Some of those things I can replace, but there's some I cannot replace. I cannot replace voted ballots that have not been counted. Okay? Like my vote-by-mail ballots. And so, we, I went out and got with Facilities Maintenance and we got a quote for this. So, you'll see the quote behind your budget page of when we got this. And talked to Mr. Howard. He thought that he had some, some ways to cover this. So, I will let him speak to you on that when he, after we, we go through this whole packet. The next item I have is our front counter glass enclosure to the ceiling. Our front counter is partially closed. It's just not to the ceiling. And the reason I bring this back is the first time we had it done, had it done with grant money. But then, w- once a year, I have cybersecurity navigators come in from the Division of Elections and they do two things. They work on our system, okay, to see if they can penetrate our system. And the other thing is to penetrate our office. And the thing that they recommended in our office, we got very high reviews, we did very well, except the front counter glass enclosure does not go to the ceiling. And in the heightened of security that we're in right now, I believe that needs to happen. This particular one, if I get grant money, this is where I'll put my grant money, okay, in this one. But it's out here right now and, and we, yeah, I, I do have a, an estimate here that we got from, from Facilities Maintenance went out and got an estimate for this one. Then on, on our next packet here, we have, uh...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Yes. Mr. Canard?
You have a question?
For, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
For the ninety-three thousand dollars to take the glass up to the ceiling, did we consider maybe bringing the ceiling down to the existing glass? Wouldn't that be less expensive?
I, I can't answer that. I asked them to come in and give me an estimate. I don't know. I, I don't know. That's a great, it's a great question. And I'll, I'll put it on here for them to look at.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the next one we had is an Inverness location. I have one office in, in Metacrest and I no longer have an Inverness office to run any of our business out of. I think we need an Inverness office. That would probably be, I didn't put any expense down here and put anything down to cover with this because I know you do in the survey, the, the space needs. But the Supervisory Elections does not have an alternate office. If, like I said, all, all elections are held in hurricane season, you know? And thankfully, my office was not damaged in any way by Idalia, but that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. You know, look how that tornado came through and just ruined so many parts of Crystal River. I need a second place ready to go. I, I've got to have a second place that I can use for, utilize for the folks on the east side of the county, that I can use for vote-by-mail, I can use for my everyday, everyday processing of elections. And so, that was our number four. And I think I'm gonna leave that to go to the space needs study, okay? I've, I've offered before, I don't know what, where the, what's happening with the Coca-Cola Company building, but I know that has a lot of the needs that I, I need in that building. And, and that's what Jeff done. He laughed at me last time, too. But I, I do need, I do need an Inverness office somewhere. My next item up was staffing. Currently, I have ten staff members. Hernando County Elections Office has fourteen and Sumter County has sixteen. I am way behind on staffing my office. I had asked for one new staff member in the past budget and I, and I got that position filled. But to upkeep with the growth and population, I am going to need more employees. We have asked for one in this upcoming current budget. We went ahead and completed our budget for, for this next year. And we're down eight, uh, seven point eight-two percent. And that does include another position. And it's very easy to present you with a budget because of the itemized budget that we do give you. We give you line-by-line, item-by-item with every quote that comes with that. And so, we're gonna, that's where we were gonna start with this next coming year is by adding one new position in. And I think we need to do that till we get up to the, at least the fourteen positions in the, for elections. Currently, our office that we have in, in Metacrest is currently holding our needs. If I add four new employees, we might have to get a little bit creative and build some office space out of some area that we have in that building. That's all I have. If you have anything for me?
Can you tell me more about the tabulation system upgrade?
Sure.
What, what is the need to upgrade?
The need is our tabulation system was bought in 2017. And when you do end-of-life with computers, you do about five years, okay? You shouldn't do much more than that with your tabulation system. They just updated all the software, all the reporting ends, the data and communication servers. And so, now it's time to update the, the scanning units.
Those scanning units are now seven years old?
Uh, they're, right, 2017.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Right. So, by the time we get to 2026, they would be ten.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Schleball?
You're amazing with your grants and thank you because if people look at our very first budget presentation, you're, you're way, you're way down there with the constitutional money. Sheriff is forty or fifty percent or maybe even more, actually, more than that. Sixty percent is to the sheriff, but is there any grant money that could help with the fire suppression?
Well, this is, this is how it works. When they open a grant, a federal grant, uh, elections grant, security grant, I'm the first one to jump on it. I jump right on it because I have a folder with all this stuff in it of what I need and what they will cover. And it takes, and in about six weeks, it's open, it's closed. I don't have anything there right now. They're coming down the pipe with one, but it depends on how much money is in it. And a lot of times, we have a certain thing in our budget called the Albert Server and that will cover from the grant that's coming up. I have to put it in my budget because if they don't do one that year, then I'm not covered. But that, there are certain things that that'll come down and cover. Depending on how much money, there's six, I think, six million dollars out there in the federal grant money right now. And so, I just, I just, I wait for the moment it becomes open because the faster you do it, the, the better chances that you'll get a higher rate. And I put everything in there that I possibly can. I will, Commissioner Schleball, I will put that in there as well as some of these other things. The front counter enclosure, I, I, I will put upgrades in it. I will put anything in there that I can get. The only thing I probably can't get that is a location and staffing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mo. Looks like no one.
Thank you.
Thanks. You're welcome to stick around if you like. We're gonna do the collaborative discussion about, emphasis on collaborative, about space needs, five-year agency needs, short-term goals, and long-term opportunities. So, would anyone like to start off? Commissioner Schleball?
Can we take a bathroom break?
Yeah.
That's a fantastic idea.
A recess for five minutes, ten minutes. A recess for five minutes, ten minutes.
So if we fund, you said fifty-nine percent is the...
Yeah, it's fifty-nine percent of what we took in of our ARPA. For sixty-nine-five million, right? So this is expensive. That you can, you can, uh, working share, yeah, sales. These are all general, all general expenses.
So if we... If you, how much of that percentage is state mandates, do you know?
When we do the million, for example, what we're getting, we're getting ninety-five point one of the hundred and twenty.
Cause pretty much the rest of it is already... Well, it's not made, oh, yes.
It's going to transportation, it's going to the Department, it's going to all these other places.
And we figured this out, is it ninety-nine or ninety-five?
This is the sheriff. The ninety-five million is the general.
Does his money come out of Ad- or AdVolum?
If you look at it and you get the ninety-five million, no matter what kind. Say, say, if our insurance goes away or goes down or what.
Whatever.
We still have to give the constitutional. So it's us going to...
Forty-two percent.
All right, can we get started? Who wants to lead off? Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, you know, I, lots of, lots of requests. Certainly a mountain of financial challenges ahead. But we take them one at a time. We address them one at a time. I believe right now, the, the most pressing concern, it has been for years, is creating space for the judges. I assume that the million-dollar estimate that was, that was mentioned a month or two ago was a total remodel of the second floor and not just our offices. A million dollars for renovating our office space seemed awfully excessive. If that's, if that's the entire second floor or, or our offices and the space currently occupied by the public defender, I suppose that's, that's a bit more reasonable than. So I think that's, I think that's the most pressing concern for us. Certainly, all of the constitutionals all, you know, have their needs, have their, their concerns. And I get it, as they should, come forward with what's most important to them. Community-wise, the room for the judges, I believe, is, is first and foremost. That means that we need to vacate our space sooner than later and get plans together for what that space and the public defender's space remodel that looks like. I would say, right up there with that, that top priority is getting additional deputies to the sheriff's office. Those who, I would say that is, that is where I would like to see us focus our resources. Not to say none of the other stuff is important, it's all important. But we've got to prioritize something because we simply don't have, we don't have the financial resources to cover all this. So prioritize it, those would be my top two.
Commissioner Finnegan?
So I do agree about the judge's space needs, and that's why I brought that up about if we use those ARPA funds for something else, we need to make sure we have that money. So if we need to spend on something else in the timeline to make sure that that money is there that, that we should do so. Judge Falvey had mentioned, and I had asked staff before, because their needs are so urgent, we know that has to happen instead of possibly waiting for that space need study to come to the end. Can we go ahead and vacate? Is there something that maybe is not perfect, but we can just kind of scatter temporarily? Let them start on that renovation and, and then decide where we're all going permanently after that? I'm not sure. But maybe when it gets started, if they can push that forward, I think that that's a really good idea. The clerk had mentioned some, some things I know in, in today's world of getting hacked. We do want to make sure that that doesn't happen to our county. So making sure that she gets that money for that upgrade is also important. The deputies, I agree that we should figure out what we can do with law enforcement, and we do need to add more deputies. In saying that, I was happy that I could click that link, being familiar with grants, and really look over that DOJ grant. I think any grant is good if we could get it. That probably is one of the, I don't know, was saying worst grant I've ever seen? Less advantageous grant probably that I have looked at just because of how it comes out from the DOJ. So, and what I think would be prudent is us to decide financially over the next several years, how many sworn law enforcement can we add this next year, the next year after, the next year incrementally? What does that look like in our budget and the taxpayer in that year four and year five? And if we could come up with something reasonable, then make that number what, what we could work with the sheriff on for the cops grant. Because it's, it's going, it's going to end, you know, after those, those three years. I understand that the need's great, but we, you know, we have to balance our needs with what the taxpayers want and, and can afford. The, the grant, the grant says to match by twenty-five percent, but that's just not possible because when they only pay up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over three years, that leaves very little money that they're matching per deputy. So we have to match not only the rest of the salary, but all the training, all the equipment, the vehicle, everything else that goes along with that. Do I think that we need more sworn law enforcement in Citrus County? Absolutely. I want to work this out for the sheriff and for the sheriff's office and give them the support that they need and make sure that we're adequately covered. But at the same time, we all will have to decide how we're going to do that and what, what we can afford and not just look at this year, but look at that year four, I think is the mark. And if we can come up with that, maybe share that information with the sheriff. I don't know how we get there all at once. When potentially, what that would cost us is going to be more money than the entire county may bring in. So that, that's a concern. And I'd love to hear from the rest of you if you have an idea of how we're going to work that out financially. But we'll need to take a close look at that.
Commissioner Bays?
I agree with you, Commissioner Finnegan. I've looked at multiple other county budgets. And I think this is the exact reason why we need to be in this room today and the exact reason why we need to have this conversation. Because I don't think, looking, going into the future, that AdVolum tax collections are going to be the way that you're going to fund government in its totality. I think we're going to have to start to look at various alternative ways to fund government based on what the constituents want. And one of the reasons why I like the MSBU for the sheriff is it's not to have more of a money grab, it's because it's then transparent. If you, it becomes a line item. If you separate it out of the county's millage, it becomes a line item on your tax bill that you can see. So, and I'm going to use round numbers for the sake of argument. So if right now, today, his budget is forty million dollars, we would reduce the millage of the county by that forty million dollars. And it would be put over here on this MSTU for the sheriff.
You said MSBU just earlier.
MSTU, sorry.
So make sure that everybody understands.
MSTU. So if, let's just say for the sake of argument that the constituents come forward and they said, you know what? We don't mind paying seventy million dollars for the sheriff. But then it has, then there, at some point, you have to say, they're going to pay that out of that MSTU, but there's only so much that you can reduce your millage on the county AdVolum side. So if you kept it with raises and you, and you offset it and adjust it, but if there's an exorbitant amount that, that the constituents say that they want to fund, then so be it. It's on its standalone. But it's also very transparent and it's very accountable to the citizens, and they get to say what they want. But I don't, I think this is... I think this is the greatest conversation we can have today because you can see that there is absolutely no way that we could take the cops grant and fund it and then fund the rest of the constitutional officers and fund the rest of the needs of the county. The needs are great. I want to make it very clear that by having the MSTU and setting aside that we would be reducing the millage on the BOCC side off of the AdVolum tax collections. But we have to find a way how we're going to deliver these services. And I think what you've also seen through the legislature is that they can come in and they can make state mandates just like the exemptions. And if you have a TU, they have the same exemptions on... Just as they would on the, the, on the BOCC AdVolum tax collections. But you can see what those exemptions are going to cost us. If we have BU's and we would go out and we'd create a BU for residential road resurfacing, those don't have the same exemptions unless we want them to. But it's a mechanism then that everybody's going to pay for their residential road resurfacing. Are we there yet? Probably not. I think this assessment program that we're going to have on our roads is going to tell us a lot. But the amount of funding that is going to be needed to advance this county forward with the growth and what the citizens want exceeds what we can deliver with just AdVolum tax collections. That's why I think it's important that the, the citizens get involved. You tell us, we want to hear from you. We need to hear from you. It's your money. We're all taxpayers. And government cannot give you what it does not previously take from you. So this is the dialogue. I think this is a, I think this is a strategy that is imperative that we have. I love it. I love that the constitutional officers come and, and we're sitting down and we're actually having a conversation for the first time. I think it was a very adversarial level to come to the Board of County Commissioners and we sat on the dais, you come to the podium, you tell us what your numbers are, and there's no conversation. This is a conversation that needs to be had year over year. And the people need to understand it. Because at the end of the day, this is their county, their dollars. And we just happen to be the ones that have to approve that. But we hear, we hear loud and clear, and, and we know that we're probably in for some challenging times. We don't, we're not sure what the economy's going to look like. And I think we've got to get through this election cycle to know that. And it could be... Could be very challenging. And we know that there's outside mitigating factors that are going to affect what's going to happen even with the taxpayers. We don't, insurance cost, just the consumer pricing, it's all adding up. But I'm still a proponent, I'm still an advocate for the MSTU. I'd like to see it separated out. I'd like to see it as its own line item. It's accountable. And it's not meant to keep the BOCC AdVolum the same. It's meant to reduce that by that number until it becomes exorbitant. And if that's what the citizens say they want, then it can, that MSTU on its standalone could be more. But we can't do it all off of just AdVolum tax collections.
Commissioner Schleber?
Thank you. I was hoping to have this discussion with the sheriff today, but this budget cycle, he asked for three million, thirty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. It was part of the majority that voted yes to give him every penny of that money. That's forty-two percent of our budget, our, our working budget. He gets forty-two percent of it. He asked for ten additional deputies. We gave him ten additional deputies. I don't know how many has been hired. Last I heard, there were six that were hired. So we took him from two-twenty to two-thirty. He is, the sheriff's office is seventy percent of the constitutional budget. Seventy percent. The other four constitutional officers take the, the thirty percent. I like the MSTU because of the fact that even though I was the one that, one of the three that voted to give him every penny he asked for, his PR now is, oh, we didn't do the top cops grant. Well, that didn't make any sense to do that. If he asked for ten additional deputies in this budget, that would be something we would look at and gradually build him up depending on what the board desired. Commissioner Cannard said that he is all about getting deputies to the sheriff, but we don't, we don't have a number. And I kind of didn't hear the first part of what he said. So if he could just repeat that to me, what his priority was for that, so I understand. Madam Chair?
Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, the first correction would be that I did not say that I was all about getting new deputies to the sheriff. What I, what I said was, one of my top two priorities would be adding additional deputies. I think, and that's, the only reason I make that, that clarification is because I think that's important. One of, one of the very few issues that we are tasked with is public safety. And I don't know... I don't know a whole lot, if anything at all, about running a sheriff's office. So we trust the sheriff and his staff to come forward and say, this is what we've got, this is what I need to protect our community. And our role, I, I believe, is to say, these are the finances we've got. This is the size of the pie. It needs to be divided by county commission, administration, other constitutionals, and you. So this is, this is... administration, other constitutionals, and you. So this is, this is what we've got to go towards your request. And then somewhere we meet in the middle. But I don't, I don't see our role as attempting to micromanage, you will, his, his requests, but rather just say, you know, we're, we're the, we're the budget part of, part of this. This is all that we have. My other priority other than, than putting some additional deputies on the sheriff's office was the space needs for the judges, getting, getting that renovated. I think, I think that's, that's been a priority for years and I think, I think we have to do something very quickly about, about vacating that space. I like Commissioner Finnegan's idea of, you know, maybe there's something, you know, makeshift that we can do. You know, I, I've suggested, you know, sharing a, maybe the downstairs meeting room when we do have to meet with somebody. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but something like that. So at least we can get that process going. We're still, you know, we're still in the same position we were, what, three years ago, four years ago, whenever that was that we first started talking about that. It's time to take that first step.
Commissioner Schleber, you have the floor still?
Yes, that was a lot of words to answer my question and I appreciate that. So what I got out of that was that he also is a supporter of the sheriff's and the sheriff's office. Safety is our, one of our number one jobs, other than the budget and policy. So I just, I wanted him to be here today so that we could stop the PR train that's going, that the Board of County Commissioners doesn't support the sheriff. Because that's absolutely, ev-, all five of us support the sheriff. It's just wasn't a grant. And how do we figure out where it could be more transparent and it could be fairer? And I think that the MSTU is something we really, really need to look at. It can't be an MSBU because it wouldn't benefit the person that just has a empty lot. So it has to be a TU. And I think that getting the proper amount of deputies there to protect us is very important. I think then two, the space needs for our constitutionals and the judicial is important. And how are we gonna get there? Where are we gonna get the money? Because that's why I told you the percentage of where the money's going. The majority of our money is going towards the sheriff. So for anybody to say that we don't support law enforcement is out and out not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schleber. I think my comments are gonna dovetail a lot with my colleagues. I would say that all of our space needs can wait until the space needs analysis, except for the judicial. We did first, I first heard this back in twenty-one. We've made zero progress. It's risen pretty much, it sounds like, to the level of emergency at this point. So government doesn't typically move very fast, but we've gotta figure out a way to move fast. So I did have some brief words with Mr. Howard. There is no room for our county attorney staff to move into LGB until Mr. Cheek evacuates the building for his own facility at the, at Nature Coast EMS. So that's where you're going, right?
Yep.
So, you know, that may have to be a work from home kinda situation for the attorneys, but we need to get out pretty much now, as far as I'm concerned. And as soon as the public defender can relocate, then all of that can be renovated into two new courtrooms. Presumably Ms. Stanton can be made, have room made in LGB for one person to come over. Yes? Hopefully. I'm getting a nod. Okay. So commissioners don't, as far as I'm concerned, commissioners absolutely need to have offices, but we can do without for a little bit until we get, get ahold of this. MSBU and MSTU, one hundred percent agree. MSBU for road resurfacing, that is coming to a point where we are now no longer accepting residential roads for maintenance. So it's going to become very unfair to our citizens that some are having to be separately taxed by their own taxing district to maintain their roads, whereas others are getting it under a general ad valorem that everyone's paying for. So it also has the wonderful effect of the trucks come through and repave your roads and you can actually see what you're paying for on your tax bill for the next ten years. You have brand-new roads and a lot less alignment issues with your car. The TU for the sheriff, I think, is a good way to go on that as well, just so it provides a lot of extra transparency. So I'm completely in agreement with that. Other than that, I agree with Commissioner Cannard's comments about there's only so much budget that we have for the deputies and we will do the best we can. But obviously, public safety is, and infrastructure are two of our largest charges that we have as a commission to fund.
Is there any further comments? Commissioner Bayes?
I'm not sure who to direct this to, whether it's Erin or the administrator, but are there opportunities for other scales of efficiencies? I think everybody and their brothers got their own employee clinic. I mean, if we combine those with that, would there be a savings there? If we looked at combining health insurance? I mean, I've heard all these rationales why we can't do it, but at the end of the day, when it's still the same payer source, I'm not sure what the difference is. So I'm just looking for ways that we can combine our efforts and gain scales of efficiencies.
I'm gonna tell you a funny story. You'll like this.
Imagine that.
One place I was at, I, they thought I was crazy, but I got everybody together on purchasing. And so I started out with the cities, the school board, and boy, I had a fight with different things. And finally, I said, can we just all agree on one item, one commodity, that we could all work?
Will and paper.
That's what I did. And my slogan was, I like slogans, if we can wipe together, we can work together. So it became a big hit. So I think there's lots of opportunities, just like you said. Obviously, on the insurance side, sometimes that's challenging because of there's other things. But I think all those things should be on the table.
Except for IT. All you have to do is look at Hernando County.
I think you look, you look at all those opportunities and you explore them and, and look what you can do. Clinics, I think, are, we've talked about that. I think there's an opportunity for that, too. Healthcare, that, it depends on, you know, there's a variety of factors for that with insurance. But I think there's all kinds of opportunities if we, you know, kinda work together and put everything on the table. And you never know what you're gonna do. And sometimes even, even in county government, even when I worked with the sheriff's office with Sheriff Judd, I had two jails that weren't communicating. And I had to go in there and actually do all kinds of things to begin bringing people together. And it's sometimes even eternally, we have to look at all those things. So absolutely, I'm a big, big proponent of that, to work together. So we're gonna continue to explore that. Actually, I'm doing that with the employees now. We're fixing implements, called the STARS program, suggestions to assist in reduced spending. So it's an opportunity where they're gonna actually be boots on the ground, looking at opportunities for us. And some of those suggestions will come up. So absolutely, we are aligned with those kind of opportunities. And we wanna continue to strengthen relationships with all the constitutional officers in the cities where there's opportunities to, to save money for the, we serve all the same taxpayers. So absolutely.
Mr. Howard, Ms., Commissioner Bayes brought up the employee health clinic. I totally forgot about the community services building. Do we have any extra room there for anyone?
Not that I'm, but we could, not that I'm aware of. So I think, we, we looked at this exercise a couple of months ago. And obviously, the locations, a lot of this is contingent on, you know, folks leaving here, which is, you know, Ken, he's not gonna feel, he's gonna think everybody wants to get rid of him, it sounds like, out of this building. But you have that opportunity, obviously, where the clinic is, when the VA leaves, it's twenty-four thousand square feet. That isn't doing so good now. That's four years out. I know they have looked everywhere in this building for lots of opportunities, but no one's found any extra space that I'm aware of to date. And then also, when you look at the other buildings within this area, it displaces people and you gotta construct there, too. We're gonna do as much as we can to fast-track this. I'd already asked staff, you know, to zero in on judiciary because of just my walkarounds and things like that. So I'm confident we'll come back with something that I think we can, we can beat that timeline of twelve months if we focus on that. The rest of it needs to happen, too, because you're in a very rare position here in this county to be able to have other square footage come online. With Ken leaving, the VA, you know, when they, they leave. So we need to make sure we get that right, too, for the future. And we just don't gobble up. Because soon as people hear there's space, 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 they're gonna try to do it. We need to make sure that we're taking care of, of our needs for now and the future as well. But we're gonna look at all those.
Meadowcrest property is completely built out?
That's my understanding. You have not heard of anything there either. So, I've not, I've not heard any other space here. But we'll ask staff to revisit it.
Commissioner Bayes still had the floor. I preempted her when, because you were running away.
Oh, what would be the process to start? If we wanted to put a one cent sales tax on the ballot in two years, in the next election cycle?
I've actually tasked that with our new intergovernmental relations manager. Obviously, there's a, Hernando just went through this. We've been monitoring that. We've got all that information. We're gonna bring that forward to you at another workshop, work session, to bring all those details to you. So I don't have that in front of me to say that off the cuff, but we, we've been looking at researching it.
I know history tells us that it takes two years.
It does. It's a timing.
But it means.
It's a timing issue. Now, James has had a chance to, he's just new on board, minted here, if he's got an opportunity to, to see what he's looked to date. He may have taken off already. But we did put that together. We, we can send that data to you. But yeah, it's a, it's not a, it takes time. There's certain restrictions typically when you can, you know, do all that. Obviously, that's something that's gotta happen from the public, you know, for those efforts. But that's actually on our target for action. There's a timeline. It's actually on our dashboard. So we have dates and times that we're gonna bring that forward to you with what we've researched. But I do, I know I got a copy of the one that Hernando just recently, they created a model, really timelines and things like that, that we can get to you.
All right, thank you.
That helps you.
Commissioner Finnegan?
We heard about all the space needs and things that's going to be up and coming. The, the urgent thing, and I didn't wanna look up while we're sitting here to be rude, finding the email. Do you remember on the COPS grant, was it June that they had to apply?
Yes. From memory, I think it was, I think it was June eleventh. I could be wrong, but it was, that's the timeline.
Just so we don't put, put the sheriff back in a last-minute situation, because I feel like the ball's a little bit in our court. Can we put a plan in place? Because I don't know that any of us are prepared to talk about what this looks like financially for us today, because we don't have the exact numbers. I believe Colonel Ferrara did have some numbers. So could we agree on maybe a plan in getting those numbers that they like to our people, to Erin, and then get numbers back to us, which obviously would need to be at a BOCC meeting at this point, and say, this is what it looks like for one person or X amount of people. This is what it will look like, the, the final cost in that fourth year. Just so, so we know what, what to look, to look at. I mean, we can't predict what the tax dollars will be fully, but if we can, we're gonna have to make an estimate. I mean, really, at the end of the day. But at least if we, I think last time there was some debate about numbers and our numbers weren't quite right and they had the good numbers. So let's, let's do all of this ahead of time and make sure that they're working with us. So it doesn't come June and then it comes back and like we've been, you know, waiting since April. Or, I mean, do you all agree with that?
I, I was just wondering, did you mean number of deputies?
For, for us to figure out what we can pay for. When I say numbers for them, because I think the cost, they, Erin had some numbers, but the last I heard, they weren't accurate for the sheriff's office numbers. So let's get the numbers they like for a cost of a deputy, the cost of training. They have equipment, but certain equipment comes due different years, right? And then the patrol vehicle, whatever that looks like in totality, not just for the, what a deputy costs, but what are those costs year after year? And then when there's no grant, what are we paying? Because we're gonna have to continue that. We don't wanna hire up to forty-six and then say, sorry, we can't pay for that. And then now we have all these patrol vehicles and all this stuff. And then we're not gonna let people go, because that wouldn't be prudent of us. So let's, I think if we have a number that we can fairly say, we need to do this, we need these deputies, which we do, how many, how many can we incorporate for the taxpayers? How, how many can we pay for in the long haul? And then make those decisions. And then have him apply for that, because the COPS grant will, will help at that point. And it would be a help and not a burden at that point.
I did ask, actually, with the sheriff, I actually copied you all on an email about his desire for the COPS grant. So I immediately did respond back, asking for who their point of contact would be. So we could begin that process of sending them an agenda template, just exactly what you said. I wanted to make sure it was their numbers and not our numbers. So we could work together. As of today, I have not received a correspondence back. I did reach out last week. So maybe by today, they'll send that, who that would be. But we wanna begin that process. And also, like you, for your point, also to make sure it's on the agenda in a timely manner. But we need, really, the sheriff's office to fill that, that document out, not our staff, because it's not a grant that we're, you know, really applying for on, on his behalf. So that's important that we get that information, who that point of contact will be. So we're gonna continue to follow up. And I planned on today following back up again as a courtesy, again, asking who that point of contact would be. And we'll take that back and try to work with them, obviously, and then get that information to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bayes?
I think we also need to know what his budget requests are in addition to the additional staffing. We have no idea what that number looks like, what he's going to come in, or salary adjustments, or FRS, or any of his other needs. And I think that's something that in order to completely evaluate this, we need the entire package.
We can ask.
I mean, it just, this, that is, it's now up to two hundred thousand dollars to hire a first-year deputy. So.
Commissioner, you're done? Commissioner Schleber?
So when you say you sent an email asking correspondence, you're talking about last year, June, for the application for the top COPS grant. We couldn't afford, was it forty or forty-three people he applied for and got the full amount? We couldn't afford that, the twenty-eight million or whatever that number was. But then he's filing again for fifty deputies, the grant. He's filing again this year. So that's why I asked Commissioner Finnegan, what, what she, when she meant numbers, did she mean amount of deputies? And I appreciate that question because, or how much each deputy was? Because it was one twenty-five last year, and then, I can't find it here, but Commissioner Bayes just, and now it's one eighty?
No, it's gonna be two hundred thousand. First-year deputy is two hundred thousand.
Today is very close to the two hundred thousand dollars per deputy. So it went from one twenty-five?
No.
Last year. That's what I'm saying. I don't, I can't get a straight number.
If I may.
Yeah, the grant was the amount.
I, I think it's the sheriff's job to decide how many deputies. We know what he needs. It's our job to decide how much money we have.
Right.
So maybe we don't figure out, hey, you can apply for twenty-five or forty-six or ten. I don't, I don't know that that's our job to do that. It's our job to say, you have a great need. This is how much we can commit to that need. And this is how much it looks like in, in four years. And then he can figure out how, how many deputies that relates to at that point.
I completely agree with you. Because last year, we didn't have the money for the forty. So this year, he's coming back and saying he needs fifty. So if that's the case, I feel like the discussion's over. Because we couldn't afford the forty grant, that wasn't a good grant for us. We aren't gonna be able to do the fifty. So that's, that's, I agree with what you're saying. It isn't our job, but he's saying, I need fifty now instead of forty last year. And, and we gave him ten. So it isn't our job, but we're put in a position of having to say, we can only afford ten. So that's, that's why I wish he was here. Because this is just a futile conversation then. But I agree with you. It's not our job, but it's becoming our job.
Anything further, Commissioner Cannard?
I hate to be disagreeable with my colleague at the other end of the table.
Oh, please.
But I, I think that our, I believe that, that our job is to come up with a number. You're, you can apply for as many deputies as you like. You can apply You can apply for a hundred, two hundred positions, whatever. You're getting this number. Now, if, you're getting this dollar amount for your budget. What you choose to do with it, that's your job. You know, if he goes out, if he says, all right, well, I'm gonna cut back here, and I'm gonna cut back here, and now I can afford these fifty new deputies, fine, you're only getting this much money.
Well, then it sounds like you agree with me.
And then what he does with that, no, we don't need, I, I don't think, and of course, I'm just kidding, but I, um, I don't think that we need to get into, um, you can only apply for ten new positions, or we're gonna give you twenty new positions. We're gonna, our job is to say, we're gonna give you X amount of money for your budget. What you do with it, and as, as the governor and, and legislature has made very clear, what he does with it, once that money is transferred over, that's up to him. That's between him and the voters to determine if they, they think he's doing the right stuff with it. Uh, now, if, if he, you know, if he applies for a grant, um, for fifty new positions, and then comes back and says, well, the budget you gave me isn't enough for my fifty new positions? I'm sorry, that's all the budget there is, the pie's only so big. Um, you know, you prioritize, or he prioritizes what he thinks is important. Uh, the same thing as the rest of the constitutionals do. Uh, you know, in the, in the clerk's office, and the supervisor of elections office, the, you know, here's your budget. We're not gonna tell you how to spend your money, you know, they know, they know that far better than we do. So I think, I think we need to, um, we can dial back the discussion, or simplify the, the discussion to dollars. You know, hire as many deputies as you can afford with this much money. So, the, I, I would say that is, that is more of our role in this, I believe that's our role in this.
Commissioner Bays, or are you, Commissioner Schleball?
Yeah, but we're all three saying the same thing.
Close.
He has this much money, and he can do with it. But if he says to us, I need ten, we're gonna try to find that money for the ten. If we can't, we say we only have this much money. Um, but, but, again, we can't have this conversation today, because it's just a one-sided conversation. So, as far as I, I see, we have thirty-nine million dollars and, and plus, that he is going to get this year. And then this board has to find additional money, but the COPS grant is totally separate from this discussion. But, I'm done, not gonna talk about it anymore, it's beating a dead horse.
Commissioner Bays?
Uh, for me personally, what I would like to see the next time we have a budget discussion is to come back and kind of outline, uh, what the constitutionals, kinda what we think those numbers are going to look like. I personally would also like for us to start, um, allocating so much, uh, a percentage into our budget every year for those, uh, grant opportunities, that we're going to have to match at some point in the future. And if we're not allocating some resources to that, we're gonna be in the same position that we're in today, because we're, we're not putting anything into the piggy bank to be able to capitalize on those. Um, so just as in our presentation today, you know, we have the four ninety-one, we have Ozella, we have future road resurfacing, and we have space needs expansion. And I'm sure there's probably something else on that list that, that's not there. But, um, I think we need to start to allocate a percentage, uh, every year into our budget so that we can capitalize on grant opportunities.
Excellent point, Commissioner Bays. I meant to, um, also, that was the point that Ms. Doran made when, in her presentation. And I, I, you have a consensus of two, at least, on that.
We're, we're hopeful this year too, to do a little different approach with budgeting, as far as not change what the board does, but as far as the communications, um, a video and things like that, more like, I call it almost like an executive overview for the public, to let them get behind the curtain. Um, because when you look at our budget documents, thousands and thousands of pages, um, you can get lost in it quick. Um, so we want to be able to do that, and I think there's some very, there's some best practices, best in class, uh, that we can do, that I think will be well received by the public, and it just makes it easier to understand it, um, because it's complicated. Um, just like a lot of you said here today, I don't get many calls, if people say, I want less services, they want more services. Um, and that costs money, I mean, all this is money, and much like, I know the sheriff's request, uh, the same with us, we have, we're down forty-four positions as well. So it's, it's challenging, these are challenging times, difficult. And some of the news that you heard today from Eric and others, that a lot of times, you know, the public and others see all this construction, it could be years before you actually see the revenue. Um, and oftentimes, no different than Florida and other states, it's tax shifts, um, and how do you pay for the government? So, a lot of times, you can do more with less, eventually you do less with less. And a lot of times, you gotta look at other ways, and how do you do this government differently, more efficiently and effectively? Um, and that's what we're, you know, we're committed administration to do, with working in partnership with the board and the constitutional officers and other elected officials in cities as well.
Thank you. I assume it would be helpful if we got a consensus on the, um, grant money percentage allocation? Just, not the number, but just the concept, yes? Would you be in agreement with that?
The concept?
The concept.
Uh, I think it's, sounds like a great idea.
Okay, yeah, not, we're not gonna sit here and put a percentage against it. Of course, yes? Commissioner Schleball?
Sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Any, does anyone have anything further from Mr. Howard, or any other comments? No? Thank you.
You so much.
Okay, as a, um, reminder, there will be no open to the public during this event. Comments are welcome at the next scheduled BOCC meeting on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, obviously in the Inverness Courthouse. And the preliminary budget hearing for the Board of County Commissioners will be held on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, also in the courthouse. Um, this has been great, I really appreciate you all staying with us to the very end. I much prefer this format over, um, chambers. This is much more collaborative, and, and the more we can work together as a, for Team Citrus, the better. So, I appreciate it very much. And, uh, with that, is everyone okay if we adjourn? Yes?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.